Okay, welcome all. The time being 7:01, I'll start the Selectmen 29 meeting of the Oxford Selectmen. I'd like to read this statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And because we are doing this by remote, I am going to ask for a roll call of the members present, and we'll start with Megan.
Megan Toriano, present.
Cheryl.
Cheryl LeBlanc, present.
Michael Daniels, present.
John Sad, present.
And Dennis Lamash, present. So all five board members are present. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I would ask for a moment of silence for Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Well-known for her belief in the fight for equality, we remember her by these words, "Women's rights are an essential part of the overall human rights agenda. Trained on the equal dignity and ability to live in freedom, all people should enjoy." May her memory be for a blessing. If you could hold her in your thoughts or prayers for a few. Thank you. All right. First item on our agenda is the town meeting's quorum reduction. I'll turn this over to our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all board members and through you to the board. Tonight before you, as you have already done once prior to our spring town meeting, annual town meeting, the board had taken a position to offer the ability for our town meeting to proceed with a potential quorum meeting reduction. We had been in touch with our town moderator once again to look at the possibility that for the fall town meeting that the board may want to do this again. I've included a printout of the language of chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, section seven, as it pertains to reduction or reduced quorum requirements. I just want to make the board sort of step back in time. In our fall town meeting, we always tend to have less people. And we, on the second town meeting in the fall that I had been here, we had a 50-minute wait while we were waiting for a 100-person count, which is our threshold for our quorum. Once again, we did this prior to allow the board to reduce the quorum should that need to be so we could proceed with the actual town meeting. As you know, for the spring town meeting, we actually had more than 100 people show up, which was terrific. And we have no idea how many people will show up for this town meeting, but we definitely would want to proceed in finalizing items that are important to the town. So I'd ask the town to consider once again in just taking another vote to reduce the quorum ability for this particular town meeting.
Thank you, Jen. Board members, questions or comments?
I have one. Just to confirm, because I remember at the last meeting that there was some confusion. We voted in, but there was confusion of the exact number. No less than 10% of the quorum meeting, as long as 10 people show up, we can have the town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? And I entertain a motion to approve this request and have a town meeting not less not less than 10% of a quorum as prescribed by the general bylaws.
I make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's five in affirmative. So we will set that quorum at that amount. Very good. Thank you, board members. All right. Next item on our agenda is discussion about the September 11th advisory for extension of allowance of outdoor table service. Town manager.
Yes, before you, in your packets, you will see that I've attached a copy of an email and advisory from the Alcoholic Beverages Commission at the state level, as well as Governor Baker's COVID-19 Orders Number 50, Number 35, and Number 43, as revised by Order Number 50. What this is actually doing is, as you know, when we did outdoor dining and we permitted different restaurants and eateries to do that, it was only going to be good until November 1st. And so basically what this is doing is allowing the town manager to extend the earlier granted approvals pursuant to the section four COVID order, number 351, for any period up to and until 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. So what we're trying to do is still help our different establishments. Obviously, as winter approaches, there may be less of that occurring, but at any rate, as long as the state of emergency remains intact, this would allow those establishments that already have been granted that permitted authority to do it 60 days until the end of the actual state of emergency.
Thank you, Jen. Board members, comments or questions? Not seeing any, then I entertain a motion to extend the outdoor privileges under the state of emergency for up to or until 60 days after the end of the state of the emergency.
Make that motion.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any comments? Then I will call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll, yes, that's five in affirmative. That is, motion is approved. Okay, next item is a public hearing. We're a little bit ahead of time, so Jen, you want to start your town manager's report?
Sure, I'd be very pleased to do that, Mr. Chairman. First item on the town manager's report is approval of minutes for the date of September 15th. All members were present. I'd request that the board vote to approve the minutes as written.
Entertaining a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No vote, yes, five in affirmative. Those minutes are approved.
Two on the manager's report is community center donation. The Oxford Community Center has received the donation from the Oxford Ecumenical Council Oxford Food Shelf in the amount of $3,000. Obviously, you know, we're in close partnership. They are in our community facility, and therefore with this donation, I announce the board in accordance with MGL, chapter 44, section 53A, to have the board vote to approve and accept this cash donation for the Oxford Community Center.
I entertain a motion to approve the, to accept the donation of the $3,000 in accordance with Mass General Law, chapter 44, section 53A.
I make that motion.
Second?
A motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Five in affirmative. We gladly accept that donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is recognition of Ed Hart. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that our Assistant Animal Control Officer has been a very long volunteer for the International Fund for Animal Welfare for more than a decade, and he's been more recently deployed out to California to help rescue animals during the wildfires. He had been stationed at the Bear Fire, which was also known as the Northwest Complex Fire, which has covered over approximately 80,000 acres, and he had helped to bring in over 1,000 animals into the shelter out there. There were over 900 homes that had been destroyed by this fire, and of course, there also had been an ability to reunite owners with their animals. And he just, I heard, may have gotten back. Kelly, oh, I saw you now, had said he may have just gotten back this weekend, but I'd love to bring him before the board and have the opportunity to recognize this service as a volunteer. It's a pretty amazing thing. He's gone into a number of major emergency areas across the country, and I think even outside of the country. And he's really an amazing individual to do that. And it's a little too soon. Probably exhausted. So, but I, you know, he just quietly does this, and I think it would be really important for the board to acknowledge him in the future, and we'll get him before the board and the community. But I know as his, as manager, I'm very, very proud of his actions.
I'm very proud of him, too. He's an asset to the town, for sure.
Thank you. Item four is town meeting update. I just wanted to inform the board that the Finance Committee held its meeting for a public hearing of the warrant on September 25th and discuss the warrant that we're going to be having for our October Fall Town Meeting, which will be October 7th. Finance Committee voted to recommend all the articles with a financial implication and then deferred to the planning board for those that did not have a financial implication. Additionally, I also met with the Planning Board on September 28th, where they held their Planning Board Public Hearing on zoning bylaw articles, and they voted to recommend the articles 11, 12, 15, and 16 of the warrant. And in addition, I had had a discussion with the proponents of the citizens petition about the egg-laying chickens and ducks. And the, the main proponent was very pleased with the article that's been drafted and being supported by the Board of Selectmen, and she has indicated she will continue to support that article, the one we've put forward, and will request citizens that attend town meeting to pass over the citizens petition article. So I just wanted the board to know that. Thank you very much for having put that together. On the heels of talking about town meeting, I just also wanted to talk about the upcoming election, the presidential election. Early voting for the November 3rd election will be held at the Oxford Senior and Social Center on Saturday and Sunday, October 17th and 18th, as well as October 24th and 25th, which is both a Saturday and Sunday, from the hours of 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Additionally, early voting can take place Monday through Friday, and that again is going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 from October 19th to the 30th. And of course, we have our Tuesday polls that will be open on November 3rd, and those will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and you'll be either at the Chaffey School or the middle school. The next item is just to inform the board that there is a restaurant update. The state has relaxed sector-specific rules relative to restrictions on restaurants. The number of persons allowed per table now has been increased from six people to 10. And additionally, restaurants now can use bar seating for food services, provided that parties still remain six feet apart from others, and that the actual counter or the bar staff is distanced at least six feet from patrons, or there is a physical barrier like a Plexiglas that separates the customers from the staff. And bars and nightclubs continue to remain closed. And I see the hour is upon you to begin your public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry for the delay. I was gonna say, Jen, I don't see in my paperwork the public hearing notice. So that's what I was doing as I was looking through that. And I do not see it. I can't read that into the record. It's not in any of my paperwork.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. I think we're gonna try to get it off the board, and I think we'll be able to read it in, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me, I can at least read the public hearing notice for the board so that you'll be able to actually enter into it.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. It was received in the clerk's office on September 10th. It was posted at 3:28. Public hearing notice in accordance with the provisions of chapter three, section 3.8 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Oxford, Karen Richardson and Elizabeth Doag, both of 49 Federal Hill Road in Oxford, Mass, has applied to the Board of Selectmen for a new special permit for animals to continue to keep up to a maximum of 24 chickens with no roosters, and to keep up to two horses, two goats, two mules, and/or two donkeys or mini donkeys, but not to exceed four animals, large animals, at any one time at 49 Federal Hill Road in Oxford, Mass. If approved, the applicants will relinquish their current special permit for animals to have two beef calves and two piglets. The property is currently owned by Karen Richardson and is identified on Oxford Assessors' Map 16, carcel D10, and at the Registry of Deeds and Book Number 25761, page 217. A public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, September 29th, 2020, at 7:15 via Zoom. And it is posted by the Oxford Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Jen, for reading that. All right. Because of a, this is a public hearing, I would entertain a motion to go into, to open the public hearing.
I make that motion.
Second?
And we have a motion and a second to go into the public hearing. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative. The public hearing is open, and I welcome all to this meeting. I see Karen Richardson, I think, I believe, and hopefully that's Elizabeth Dog with her. And if you'd like to just give us a quick overview to the board, that would be nice. We have received all the paperwork, but it's nice to hear from the applicants.
So as it's written, I was just hoping to amend the permit we currently have. I mean, there's no, there's no need for us to have the two cows and two pigs as my father had previously wanted. But as he, he did point out in his meeting back when he had it, I do have kids, and I would like to just add some more actual farm animal-type animals, like petting zoo-wise, for the kids to, to have and keep on the property and remain with the 24 chickens that we do already have.
Great. Very good. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody in the public that would like to comment?
Yes, Dennis?
Yes. Go right ahead.
My name is Robert Herman, 86 Fallow Hill Road. My only concerns I have, and going by the original permit, the language, was there was limitations. You had two beef cows, two piglets, up to eight months. Current permit was, that been issued of what their request is, is two horses, two mules, two donkeys, two goats, up to four large animals. My only concern I have is that being the partial land that sits on an acre plus, it's not a large property, having two horses, two goats on such a small stamp of property, I think is way too much. Again, it's a special, it's a privilege to have. I just think it's too much. I would just like to see a little bit, how would this wording be? I mean, if I'm reading this correctly, you could have two horses, two mules at one time.
Nice.
Okay.
Excuse me. How about if we let our Animal Control Officer, Kathy Flynn, kind of add her comments?
Thank you.
So I did speak to Liz. I spoke to Karen a little bit, too, but I spoke to Liz. So we did kind of narrow it down some because Liz was under the impression that if you put in for a special permit so that you wouldn't have to change it again, you would put in like any possibility of animals that you wanted to have. But I, I don't think that she really understood that you have to be more specific than that. So we did talk about it, and Liz, you can correct me if I didn't understand you correctly, but I spoke to both of them, and basically Liz said what they would like to do is get a couple of either pygmy goats or dwarf, so there's African pygmy goats, and then there's Nigerian dwarf goats, but they're both miniature breeds of goats. They'd like to get a couple of those in the spring, and she would like to have a Shetland type pony for her three children at some time in the future after that, and maybe a miniature donkey if the pony is like freaking out by not having another equine around. So I did include like the sizes of the animals. Does everybody have a letter from me showing how big these kind of animals are?
Yes.
No, I haven't.
Okay. Robert Herman doesn't have it. So Robert, an African pygmy goat is about 16 to 23 inches high at the withers, which is like the, it's width, your neck, the animal's neck joins the back, so that stays the same height all the time. So in other words, if they lift their head up, it would make them taller than if they had their head down. So they always measure animals like that at the withers, and they weigh between 30 and 50 pounds each. And a Nigerian dwarf goat is about 22 inches high at the withers, and they weigh from 25 to 40 pounds each. So they are, they're about the size of a medium to large-sized dog. They're not big animals. And then miniature donkeys average between 32 and 36 high inches high at the withers and weigh between 200 and 400 pounds. And a Shetland type pony is 42 to 46 inches high at the withers and weighs between 400 and 450 pounds. If that gives people, you know, a little better idea of the size of the animal.
All right.
So I think the land is sufficient to contain, you know, have those types of animals, up to four of them, two goats and a pony and/or donkey, miniature donkey.
Okay.
Does that help you? Excuse me. I just wanted to know if that helped you.
Yes, it did. But like I said, I understand the size of the goats, but the language, I understand when you apply for the permit, you need to put out as much as you can in a broad spectrum. I understand that. But like I said, like I remember the last meeting when it first came to, like Selectmen said stated, permit needs to have bite. I remember that, and that's something important. My, my only concern is that I just want the language to state that you're not gonna have two horses and two mules. That's all I want. I want it where it's gonna actually have a permit with bite, with restrictions. You can have it what's acceptable for an area that's great for everybody. And again, like I said, that, that's really all I'm looking for and what I'm concerned. I just don't want to have, and I think Kelly could probably chime in, she'll probably could agree that you couldn't have four horses on that piece of area. And that's, but if you're reading what was delivered to me, it states that of the four large animals, that's all. I just want it to be more hammered out, language-wise, and what's okay. Because actually, I think personally, if they wanted to have the chickens, it's no issue. The goats, no issue. If they wanted to have a pony and they wanted to have a mule, I don't care, but I don't want to have four horses, four, four mules. And if you look at the permit language, that's what it states. I just want to make sure that it's fair.
So that was my fault. I was, like Kelly had mentioned, I was trying to, sorry, my screen changed. I was trying to get it to, to word like in the future, but as Kelly had said, we've already decided on what would be best for the land as it is. So we do need to, I'm not sure how it gets changed from this point onward to how Kelly and I have agreed upon what would be best. But yeah, the wording would have to be changed to, to further the understanding for how we actually want it. I was just trying to figure out how the permit was supposed to actually be worded. That was it. But yeah, I'm hoping to stick with two goats and the mini pony and/or mini donkey at a absolute maximum with the chickens.
I think that's great. I think that's fantastic, and that's what the Selectmen are gonna do. They're gonna, they're gonna actually help hammer out the permit, and that's what they do.
Mr. Herman, I think you're gonna find when we have Kelly read her recommendation that you'll hear those concerns just as they've kind of been stated. Because I'm looking at the way she's written the statement I have is that the maximum we're talking here is six animals. So you, correct?
It would be four, like larger animals and the 24 chickens.
Well, you're talking about two goats.
Yeah.
Oh, you got two different types of goats, so you're only gonna have like one of each.
We only want the two goats, no more than that.
Oh, so, so, okay. I'm reading that wrong. So you're talking four animals besides the chickens.
It's mostly just a, they're all herd-type animals, so they kind of need somebody of like their, their similar characteristics.
So I was wrong. I was reading that wrong. So that's why I shouldn't say anything until Kelly makes her recommendations. Is there anybody, Mr. Herman, are you all set for right now?
I'm perfect, thank you.
Okay, great. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to say something? All right. Board members, you have some comments or questions before I go to Cat, to Kelly? No, then we'll go to our great Animal Control Officer, Kelly Flynn. Will you kind of give us your recommendation, please?
Okay, so I would recommend that Ms. Karen Richardson be allowed to amend her current special permit to contain two miniature goats, one Shetland type pony, and one miniature donkey, as well as the current up to 24 chickens.
Fantastic. All right. Board members, any questions or comments? Any more comments or questions from the public? Not seeing any, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Selectmen?
Uh, excuse me.
Let me get it, Jim.
Repeat that, I didn't get it.
I'm very happy with the recommendation. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So again, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion.
Second?
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative. Public hearing is closed, so now I will open it up to the board's discretion, discussion on what you'd like to do. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of our control officer.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second. So the, we have a motion and a second to grant the special permit as stated in the recommendation of Kelly. Any comments? Then a call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's four in the affirmative, one abstention. Congratulations ladies, good luck. And as always, thank you, Mr. Herm, for giving us your, your comments on that. It's very nice to hear when the board of this can agree to things like that. And thank you, and Kathy?
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Kelly, as always, thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Have a great evening, everyone, be well.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is back to our, uh, town manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask to, um, have the board indulge, um, our town moderator who's joined us a little bit after we, uh, addressed the, uh, agenda item related to a reduced quorum, but, um, I did want to give him an opportunity to address the board, uh, relative to that particular action. Uh, Russ, just so that you know, they had, um, just before you came on, had addressed the issue in the same manner the last time they voted affirmatively, um, to, um, reduce the quorum requirement, should it be necessary. But I don't know if you have any thoughts to share with the board at this point in time.
No, I would totally agree with that. Uh, it worked out well last time. Uh, it takes a lot to get that auditorium all set up and I would hate for it to be short, just a couple of, uh, people and, and not be able to have the meeting. Uh, we had, uh, more than a quorum last time, but just in case, uh, I think that that was a very wise move. So completely agree.
Terrific, terrific.
Russ, could I ask you a question? You said the auditorium, are we going to meet in there or the gym?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, yeah, the, force a habit, the gymnasium.
All right, cool.
Yeah, the gymnasium.
Cause that, that worked out pretty well in the gymnasium.
It, it did, and again, it was a, it was a lot of, uh, setup from, uh, the town employees, but we certainly appreciate it. It worked out very well and I, I think it'll work out well again.
All right, very good.
Thanks, Russ, we'll see you, we'll see you for the, yep, well, we'll see you, uh, for the meeting prep, meeting.
On Thursday.
Yes, thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Item seven on the manager's report is, uh, the COVID reopening, step two of phase three, October fifth, um, which is today, we actually, I mean, effective October fifth, excuse me. There's going to be a limited number of sectors that will be open, um, once again with restrictions. Um, and this in particular is for lower risk communities, uh, such as Oxford. Um, there's, there's been a, a press release put into your packets, but the main thing that mostly applies outside of the industry, um, specifics that I want to bring attention to is that the limit for indoor gatherings at private, um, residences, um, in their backyards, uh, would, uh, be a maximum of fifty people and the limit for indoor gathering remains at twenty-five. I think that's important for people to know, um, that the other kinds of things that relate to, you know, larger performances and, uh, businesses that have, uh, fitting rooms and the like, that, um, is not as important, I think, at this point in time as it is for our residents to know that there's been some adjustments, uh, for the number of people that they can have, um, in their, their own private, um, uh, backyards and the like. Uh, the next item is, uh, item eight, which is the resignation of our DPW director. Um, I regretfully announce publicly for the first time, other than what, um, has been emailed to, uh, Oxford town employees, that I've accepted the resignation of our DPW director, Sean Dival. As you know, Sean has been an integral part of Oxford's administrative leadership team and has served this community very, very dedicated, um, in a manner that, um, few would, uh, be able to fit into his shoes for over thirteen years. He's modernized the Department of Public Works. He's, uh, provided a steady management hand in overseeing all aspects of the town's engineering, facilities, highway, parks, cemeteries, stormwater, conservation, tech review and sewer projects. Personally and professionally, he will be, um, greatly enriched by becoming the next commissioner for the city of Marlborough, um, the Commissioner of Public Works. Um, please, uh, join me and I hope the community also does in extending him your personal best wishes for a bright future on the road ahead. He will be here with us, um, through our town meeting and will, uh, be departing shortly after that. So if people, um, in the public who've always, um, had a good response, uh, from Sean and his team want to stop by his office and wish him well, I'm sure he would greatly appreciate that. On the heels of the resignation, I just wanted to also, um, let the board know that, uh, we have posted for the, um, Director of Public Works. Um, it has been posted on the Mass Municipal website, as well as the, uh, New England Chapter of the American Public Works Association. Currently, there are six comparable positions, it's unbelievable, um, on the MMA website, just within the matter of us last week. So there's a number of postings that have gone up for the similar or very same, um, type of position. So I think we'll have our work cut out to, um, make sure that, uh, we try to retain, uh, another DPW director. Having said that, I just also wanted the board to know that I'm pleased to announce that, uh, Mr. Tony Sousa, uh, who is certified as a, um, planner by the American Planning Association and has a master's in, uh, public administration, has accepted our offer of employment and is anticipated to join the town of Oxford in November as our first Director of Planning and Economic Development. Um, just to let this board know, uh, we went through an incredible, uh, process for screening, uh, with the direct input from the planning board and also the chairman of, uh, planning, as well as our DPW director, our human resource, uh, professional and a number of other people, um, including three members of the, um, planning board. Uh, Mr. Sousa, uh, will come before this board, uh, but I wanted to let you know that we anticipate him, um, to be arriving in November. And after having attended the public hearing for the planning board, they already have a list of things that they want him to work on, uh, developing some new, uh, planning, uh, related bylaws. So I just, uh, am excited about, uh, the prospect of bringing him on board. Also, I know that this board had voted to appoint a temporary town clerk, but this is the first time that I can actually say that I'm pleased to announce that Michelle Jenkins, who's a certified municipal clerk, um, has accepted, um, our offer of employment, is anticipated to join the town of Oxford in October and will officially preside over the upcoming election. Um, she is, um, accepted the position of temporary town clerk. Also related to personnel, um, on September eighteenth, um, twenty twenty, our health agent, uh, Thomas Purcell, had alerted the town manager's office that he will be retiring from his role as Board of Health Agent for the town of Oxford. As you know, Tom has been, um, such an integral part to the Board of Health. Um, he has been, uh, somebody who has dedicated many, many years of service, not only as a Board of Health Agent, but also to our, uh, fire service, um, and had, uh, taken on a very prominent leadership role there as well. Um, I guess, you know, Tom, after all of his years of service, has decided that it's more important right now to, to spend some time with his family and to enjoy his retirement and I couldn't agree with that more. Although I, my heart is very heavy because as you know, um, he's been a terrific person, um, to, uh, lead our Board of Health. And again, um, his shoes will be, uh, also difficult to fill. But I really extend my personal, um, best wishes for him, uh, for his retirement. And, um, I encourage everyone in the community who's had, um, good, uh, experience with Tom to wish him well as well. Um, the next item is just to alert the board that our fiscal year twenty audit, uh, is actually going to be underway, um, and the auditors will be on site, uh, October nineteenth to complete the actual fieldwork that they had initiated back in July. So we're on target for that financially. Also, I wanted the, um, townspeople to know that the real estate tax bills for property tax, um, just a reminder that the twenty twenty-one semi-annual preliminary real estate and personal property tax bills are due on October first. The bills were mailed out in July, on July first, and they can be paid online by mail or also dropped off in our town hall drop boxes, both located in the front of the building and in the back of the building. And they can also come to our concierge window, um, or customer service window, um, during the hours that it's open on, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, this is just to let people know that we are offering a flu clinic, uh, for the regular standard flu shot, um, at our senior center. That will be on October fifth from nine thirty to eleven thirty PM. Uh, you do have to sign up for this, um, by tomorrow on September thirtieth, so they'll know how much, uh, flu vaccine to take with them. But, um, it is an easy place, uh, to get the vaccine and I would strongly recommend, uh, people with the advancing, uh, flu season to take, um, the opportunity to have this, um, done and to bring your insurance card with you. Uh, the next item is item sixteen is just to, uh, let the board know that Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has submitted a letter to Congress relative to the twenty twenty United States Census, um, indicating that they have significant concerns, uh, with the fact that there's been a one month reduction of data collection. It was supposed to go beyond, um, the, the next month and, uh, for some reason, it, the actual data collection time period was shortened and, um, they have sent this to a number of prominent, uh, legislative leaders on Capitol Hill, uh, because they feel, and we should all feel, uh, because it relates to the way that we get our federal grants and where we get ranked in terms of our overall population and demographics. So inaccurate census data is critical for municipal operations and grant funding qualifications. So I also support the fact that they should take as much time as they normally do to go and account for, um, the citizens of this town. It does have financial implications and many other implications for federal grant funding. Item seventeen is to alert the community, especially those people who are going to, um, be around carbuncle, uh, in McKinstry Pond, uh, and those people who actually are residents around those ponds, that on Friday, October second, both ponds will be treated with, um, aquatic herbicide. Aqua Pro, uh, will be there to control, uh, the growth of nuisance water lilies and the ponds will be closed to all uses, including swimming, boating, fishing and, uh, on the day of the treatment. The next item is just once again to let the public know, because I know this is a huge thing everybody wants to, uh, participate in, and that's the fall twenty twenty bulk off, bulk item drop off. Uh, the Oxford DPW has announced the dates for the fall, uh, bulk item drop off days. Uh, residents north of Charlton Street and Sutton Street, um, Charlton Street and Sutton Ave, excuse me, can drop off their bulk items on October thirty-first. And residents south of Charlton Street on Sutton Ave can drop them off on November seventh. Um, this items, um, for drop off will occur from eight AM to three PM, um, and that will be at the Oxford Transfer Station on two hundred Leicester Street. And if you need more details on what is permitted and how it runs, if you haven't done it, please go to our town website where you can find it under the Department of Public Works, as well as our, um, news announcements. Next item, since we're talking about animals, um, is to let, uh, everyone be informed that the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, uh, Resources had announced that barn inspections and animal census, um, had actually been postponed until fall twenty twenty-one because of COVID nineteen pandemic concerns. The animal inspector, in this case, our animal inspector and animal control officer are one and the same. They've been advised to continue to check on properties that they might've had problems with in the past, but typically they have to also, uh, be required to notify the state of being able to do this. Um, so they've given them a bit of a reprieve, although our animal, um, control officer and animal inspector, um, does not see any concerns in moving forward, but we did get that notification from the state and I wanted to share it with the board. Another notification we did get from the state, and this is to remind everybody, um, especially because we were talking about the wildfires in California, that the, uh, Massachusetts Emergency Management Association, in your packets you will see, has, um, continued to advise, um, all of the communities in the Commonwealth that, uh, due to the ongoing drought conditions, that we are continuing to be at very high risk for fires and people need to take exceptional care, um, whether they're having a, a small barbecue or, um, small pit fire in their yards, they've got to take very good caution, um, because something small could lead to something very dangerous. And, um, they want us to continue to get the word out and I know that the fire department will continue to do that as well. And the, um, next item is EverSource National Grid Financial Assistance Program. As we recognize that there, people continue to have, um, difficulty, um, being, being able to be employed, um, having to deal with this pandemic, that National Grid has announced that they're going to offer webinars to residential customers who may benefit from financial assistance during these difficult times. Um, we want to strongly encourage people who are having trouble paying their electric bills. Um, there will be, um, an upcoming, um, series of webinars, Tuesday, October twentieth at seven PM. Uh, and you can see the number of other, uh, dates, uh, for people both in English and Spanish and Portuguese. Uh, or you can go on masssave.com, uh, for, um, the webinars. Um, and I do want people to know that National Grid does understand that it's going to be important as we go into the winter months to make sure that people have, um, heat and electricity in their homes, uh, regardless of what's been happening with the pandemic, um, or not. So I, um, I strongly encourage our residents to do that and know that, um, National Grid, uh, was there to be able to help serve, um, the residents of this community. Um, I was going to say, that was my, um, closing item on my agenda and, um, I don't know if we'll be able to do that, this, uh, agenda item, but, um, I also had, just right before we came on television, had seen that, um, Tim Labonte has given us a new face look for our, uh, Facebook page and I was hoping he might connect it to, um, the, uh, manager's report. Uh, I don't know if he can do that this evening, but it's, uh, very much more, uh, dynamic and rather than static and it's nice to have somebody, um, who can do that. Uh, Tim went around uptown, took a lot of video of different important places so that when people visit this Facebook website, um, they'll be able to, to see it. And, um, I don't know if he'll be able to get it up, I'll wait one more minute. And if he can do it, that's great, um, but if he can't, I'll have to wait till, no, I think he's going to do it. Um, so this is the, this actually becomes the top screen, I think, for our new, uh, Facebook page. So when you click on our Facebook, it actually has this really active, um, I think eye catching, uh, way to sort of draw people in and, uh, there's the Huguenot oak, as you can see. And, uh, then you guys had that as a recent agenda item. And, um, I know we had the town hall at the beginning, we have, uh, our bandstand and as you can see, we were cleaning up the bandstand recently and also, uh, clarinet and solm. But I just think, once again, it's, uh, a way that we're trying to modernize, um, and, you know, continue to, uh, draw people in and, uh, participate in communicating both with the town and for us to, um, get our information out. And there's that beautiful, I'm so proud that DPW did this, that beautiful fountain, looks lovely. And there's our library. So anyway, I, I hadn't realized he had done that and I was going online to see the posting from the ponds, uh, aquatic, uh, applications and, and I saw that. So I just thought you'd enjoy seeing that for this evening. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jen, very good, Tim, looks real nice. All right, uh, selectmen's request, we'll start with Megan.
Just have a couple of things tonight. Um, I was wondering, we haven't gotten an update in a while. Is there any way that we could get an update on Oxford's COVID numbers? Um, I know some of the surrounding towns are rising. Um, it brought to my attention that Webster is apparently almost in the green category. Uh, yellow, is almost in the yellow category now. And I was just wondering if we could get an update on Oxford. Last I knew, there was only probably three active cases, but it just might be nice coming into the trick or treat season to get an update on that.
Sure, uh, I can kind of tell you that, um, just even off the top of my head, that the last numbers that we had for, um, COVID were a total of a hundred and nine cases since the beginning of the pandemic. But, um, with, um, we had five active cases the last time that, um, they had informed me. Uh, and, uh, there's been a couple of spurts where we've had, you know, uh, each day maybe two that were added on. Uh, so we bumped up from being in the high eighties, you know, through the nineties and now, um, just over a hundred. Uh, but again, the active cases is, um, somewhere between probably now three to five people. But, um, I would be more than happy, uh, to provide that, um, as we, uh, approach, uh, Halloween and we'll post those numbers as well.
Great, thank you. Uh, and then kind of on the heels of that, um, I got brought up Halloween, not at the town clerk appointment, but at the last meeting that we had before that. And I guess I was kind of on the impression that it was going to be, um, on an agenda so that we could affirm that we were going to stand behind our policy. Um, and I know that we can't do that in selectmen's requests, so I just didn't know if we could have a discussion on our next agenda before the town meeting. I've gotten a lot of calls from residents, even since the last time I brought it up, asking if we were going to have Halloween. And I did say that we have a policy that says that we will have Halloween on Halloween, but I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't kind of alone in that stance and that despite the pandemic, we were still going to. and that despite the pandemic, we were still going to stand behind our policy.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just interject here to to address Selectman Traiano's question. I just want the board to be aware that the Board of Health is meeting Monday to talk about Halloween and trick-or-treating, and the CDC has recently come out with guidelines, and so has the state. And I think they will take careful consideration, and they'll provide this this town and the Board of Selectmen with guidance on how they'll proceed. And that might help enlighten you. And once we get that, I will be willing to obviously share that with the board, and we can put it on an agenda.
Okay, if we could just, I'm just, thank you. I just, I'm looking at the calendar, and I'm looking how it's getting closer. And there's a lot of uncertainty, which is understood, but I just want to make sure that I'm not guiding people in the wrong direction, because like I said before, I don't think it's a Board of Selectmen issue necessarily, because it's not my right to tell you who you can and can't have at your house. But I just wanted to make sure I'm not guiding residents in the wrong direction. And I think that's it.
Very good, thank you, Megan. And I don't think you're alone in that thought process with trick-or-treating. I think a lot of us have been getting questions. So, so we go to Selectman LeBlanc, Cheryl.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have any requests, but I do just wanted to to kind of point out, Selectman Sad told me about this a couple of years ago when we first did the permit for Henry Richardson up on Federal Hill Road. He advised, he told me that Mr. Richardson, who is, I believe Karen and Liz's dad, was instrumental in building the gazebo on the on the town common. And, you know, I just, it it always amazes me, the more and more I I'm in town and the longer that I stay on this board, of all of, how all of these pieces kind of all fit together. And and I want to thank, you know, Liz and Karen for coming forward during the public hearing and being respectful for the neighbors. And that it's amazing to me that something as beautiful as the gazebo is is from one of our former residents, and I'm just grateful that he did that, because we now have this amazing piece of architecture that is just known throughout the Commonwealth, truly. So again, just wanted to 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 say thank you to them, and that was all that I had this evening.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Very well stated, also. Selectman Daniels, Mike.
Good evening, everybody. I I have nothing to put out this evening.
Very well put, thank you. Selectman Sad.
The way Mike started off, I thought we were going to be here for a night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I just have one thing I'd like to discuss, and that's in regards to our annual town report. Every year, the Board of Selectmen, and actually, this was Karen Crandall's project. She coordinated all the information from all the departments. And we had always, ever since I can remember, produced an annual report. And it's kind of like a history of Oxford. Every once in a while, I'll go back and I'll pull out a couple of reports, and I get caught up in looking at more than a couple, because you can actually see how the town has transformed over the years, budget-wise, department-wise, personnel-wise, and it's a part of history. Like, I can remember when we had 9/11. I can visualize the photo on top of that book. It was a picture of the ruins of the tower in New York and a gentleman climbing up on the tower to raise a flag. So that was the cover of our our report. It just so happens that that individual that raised the flag on 9/11 on those ruins happened to have been an Oxford resident, a graduate of Oxford High School. So there's a lot of history, and over the years, bits and pieces of history were in that report. And I know not everybody in the town takes that report. They go to town meeting, if it's there, they'll grab it. And I know we used to have a stack of them in the town hall. If people came in for inquiries for some reason or another, they would grab a copy. And I I just thought it was a good tradition, and I I understand that this year it it didn't happen. And I'd like to know why we can't continue that tradition. And I just opened that up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, you know, sort of take people back a couple of months. During the time that the heightened pandemic was occurring, even our printer was not available at that time. As you know, this usually requires, you know, it's not the most cost-effective thing that we've done. I've tried to stream it a little bit, because we used to have so many excess books. There was like an overproduction of them. So so we managed to do that, but the real thing was, even though everyone had submitted their reports, we were having very much difficulty in getting anybody to print it. And at the time that we were dealing with COVID, it was just, you know, our number one priority, and we didn't have that ability. What we were trying to do is do more and more electronic. And I had met with the staff, and you know that we're down in staff in both the manager's office and the Board of Selectmen's office. It's not a tradition that we're going to get rid of, but it was a tradition that got bumped a little bit this year. And we have the ability to produce something that we could do in-house that would be much more cost-effective, and we were planning to do that with the ability to post it online. But my hope is that we can get a version of that printed. And, you know, if I can do that before town meeting, we'll do that. But, you know, with everything else, it wasn't the number one priority at the time. But I can tell you that it's not a tradition necessarily that we're going to to break. But at the height of COVID, the printer that we normally had was not able to actually do our printing in time for our annual town meeting.
Well, that's good to hear, because I think it's a tradition that it's been going on for so many years, and it would be sad to see that disappear. And if someone goes to the Oxford Library, they can they can actually go back and review what happened all these years since we started doing these reports. And it's really amazing how history has transformed this community over the years. And I just think it's a valuable tradition that we should try to keep. And I'm happy to hear, Madam Manager, that it was only a bump in the road and that
Yes.
the the future will continue to provide that kind of service to the community. Thank you.
No problem, Selectman Sad. And just also for the record, they, the Secretary of State's Office encourages for document documentation reasons for the very similar ones that you've stated about looking at the history of each community, that they put one together. They they, if if you don't do one in a given year, they can levy a penalty of $50 towards town for not doing that. But, so it's not a direct requirement, but most communities want to continue with that tradition for the very reasons you stated, and we will continue that as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much, John. The only thing I have, Jan, is, I don't know, maybe just my eyes or something. I know we put out, the town put out the signs for social distancing and things like that. There were like three signs, I think, that you put out in various parts of the town. Are those still needed? The reason for I, the reason I bring this up is that there are a few of those signs down in South Oxford by the railroad tracks just before Dana. And they're kind of like getting overgrown with the weeds and things like that. It just kind of looks trashy. And I didn't know if if they're still needed, can we just straighten them out? If not, you know, you know, well, I don't know, people like.
No, no, I understand exactly where you're coming from. So so that was an initiative from the Board of Health, and in particular, one of the members, you know, really wanted to do that in the beginning of the pandemic. So why don't I do this? I'll I'll check with them and see if they feel that they are still necessary at this point in time. And if they are, maybe we can put them in a more prominent place that's not being overgrown or I I even over at the Market Basket intersection, there's a cadre of signs that aren't even supposed to be there, because they're in the public way, you know. But that those are there for public health education, but even they now are all crooked and stuff. So let me talk with them, and I'll also, if they say we can remove them, we'll get the DPW to go around and and grab those and and keep them for, you know, an ability to use them potentially if we ever had a need in the future.
Okay, yeah, you know, just kind of like I said, it kind of looks trashy, you know, the way they're just there. So it'd be nice to see them either stood back up if we're going to use them still or eliminated. And that's all I had. So not hearing any other concerns from the board, I'll obtain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
You're muted, Dennis.
Oh, I must have hit it by accident. I said five in the affirmative, we are adjourned, and I wish you all a wonderful week, and we'll see you next week at the town meeting.